Okay, everybody, welcome to the calling the select board meeting Thursday, November 20th to order. Tonight, we have Kevin, Bob, Roger, and myself. If we can start it off with the pledge allegiance, please. Peter.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic pro which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome, everyone, and thank you. So first off, we have appointments of three firefighter EMTB to the Norton Fire Department, Mr. Joshua Bumpus, Jasmine Lacy, and Ethan Cameron. Chief.
We're here to request the appointment of three firefighters to fill existing vacancies within the department. All three individuals interviewed extremely well, and they were unanimously selected by our interview committee, which consists of one member from each rank of our department. It was obvious to us that they were all highly motivated and driven individuals, in that they were excited for the opportunity to work for our department. We're confident that they possess the qualities needed to effectively serve our community as firefighter paramedics. And they're all veterans as well, all from different branches. So I think we're just missing the AFOS up here, if I remember correctly, right? So we have Joshua Bumpus. He grew up in Berkeley, currently lives in Dayton. He serves in the Army National Guard for six years, and he's currently serving as a sergeant. Jasmine Lacy grew up in Taunton. She currently lives in Somerset. She was six years active duty in the Navy, working as a nuclear machinist mate first class. And then we have Ethan Cameron. Ethan grew up in Attleboro, and he currently lives in Attleboro. He was a member of the United States Marine Corps. And also with Ethan, his father is a retired district chief from Attleboro, who is here tonight. And he has two brothers in the fire service as well, one in Norton and one in Attleboro. So, thank you.
Okay, wonderful. All right. So you guys have anything to say, by any chance?
They all have 15-minute speeches prepared, but I'm not sure.
All right, well, sounds good. We can do one motion for all three, or do they all have to be individual? Mr. Town Manager.
Whatever is your pleasure.
Okay. I'll be looking for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I hereby notify the select board in accordance with provisions of the Article Four, Section Two B of the Norton Charter, acting my capacity as the appointing authority, I appointed the following individuals as permanent full-time firefighter EMT-B in the Norton Fire Department, Joshua Bumpus, Jasmine Lacy, and Ethan Cameron. The appointment was made on November 13, 2025, and will be effective November 28, 2025, unless the board, select board votes to accept or reject the appointment prior to that date. However, I specifically request that the board's acceptance of the appointment be effective as of December 1, 2025, for all three candidates.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Welcome, guys. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
You have a good night.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sure these parents and family want to get a picture of them all.
Here.
Go walk the behavior.
Yeah, we're right in front of them.
Let them get in there with the...
All right.
But I just don't want to be in it. Sorry, Bob.
Somebody call an EMT. Congratulations again.
All right. Perfect. So next, we have minutes. Anybody have any questions, comments, concerns with the minutes?
Chairman, I make a motion we approve the minutes, including limited to November 6, 2025, as written.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to commend Jennifer for the quality work she does on these minutes. I got to tell you, every time I read these, after each meeting, I'm amazed. And I'll probably continue to... Thank you, Jen, for the good work you do. These are almost transcribed. You know, it's not even minutes, they're seconds. And you capture all of the conversation and all, so I'm going to continue to recognize you on these, because I've been on a lot of boards and committees, and I know it's a lot of work, so nice job.
Okay, thank you. And moving on, we have licenses and permits, 2026 license renewals. Mr. Town Manager.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the licenses before you are the common victualers. To the uninitiated, that means to serve food at tables, Class One, Two, and Three, new, used, and junk vehicles, and lodging houses. These are all licenses that are currently in place and are simply renewing what they have. Next week, we'll have more licenses, but these are the ones that have submitted to date. And at the board's pleasure, they could vote it all together, or read them all individually.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I don't object to reading them all as in each category, but I do have one question. There's one that says that there are some outstanding taxes in a bond that hasn't been received. Have we received that yet?
Not yet, because the bond he currently has hasn't expired, so once it does expire for 25, and it renews again, he's going to provide me with the copy.
Okay.
So with that being said, can they be approved pending? Anyone that has any outstanding items?
Sure can.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So the renewed licenses, as the town manager indicated, they're common vic, all alcohol, which is CVAA, common vicular restaurant wine and malt, which is CVWM, RPAA, which is retail package stores, all alcoholic, RPWM, which is retail package store, wine and malt only, and CV, which is common vicular, which is items, food to be served at tables. I'll make a motion that we approve the common vicular license per the list we've been...
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Second class is one, Class One, which is an agent or seller license, is for the sale of new motor vehicles. Class Two is new, is used car dealer's license to buy and sell secondhand motor vehicles. And a Class Three is a junk motor vehicle junk license. I'll make a motion that we approve all of the candidates on the list for their one, two, and three license, and ask that the one applicant that is subject to the $25,000 bond and paying outstanding taxes be included, with the understanding that it would be approved once those two issues are corrected.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Second class is one, Class One, which is an agent or seller license, is for the sale of new motor vehicles. Class Two is new, is used car dealer's license to buy and sell secondhand motor vehicles. And a Class Three is a junk motor vehicle junk license. I'll make a motion that we approve all of the candidates on the list for their one, two, and three license, and ask that the one applicant that is subject to the $25,000 bond and paying outstanding taxes be included, with the understanding that it would be approved once those two issues are corrected.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Four ayes, Jen.
Four ayes.
Four ayes.
Lodging house. We have two lodging houses in town. One is a lodging house at Eight Pine Street, and the second one is a lodging house with a common vicular license at 69 East Main Street. Make a motion that we approve both of these licenses.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Again, four ayes. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to point out that not only is all of, are all of these establishments in our packet that's posted on the town's website with the meeting agenda, we know they'll become part of the minutes as well, but if anybody is interested on whose licenses were approved, they can go on right now on the, on our website and look at the packet information, so just for the public's information.
Yep. Thank you, Kevin. All right, those are licenses and permits. Any announcements? Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, Festival of Lights will be held this Sun, not this Sunday, will be held on Sunday, December 7, at 5:00 p.m. in the Norton Town Common. This is a great opportunity for people to come out, Miss Santa Claus, Mrs. Claus, and participate in this. Normally, they have hot chocolate and pastries and that kind of stuff. They also have the Norton Historical Society at the Schoolhouse, which is at 18 West Main, also is having an open house that same night, so if you get a bit cold and you want to come into a warm spot, the society will be open. Again, they will have hot chocolate and cookies, and perhaps even a small gift for children if they do come by. On the Festival of Lights, if you bring a new toy for the event, it will be donated to the C2 Foundation Toy Drive, and there'll be live music, crafts and snacks. You can drop off a letter to Santa, which I plan on doing, train menorah lighting, a visit again from Mr. and Mrs. Claus, and live performances. What is the Santa? Who are we taking care of? I think I got, I think I got it all.
Looking for entertainment.
There's a coat drive being held in Norton. Okay, I'll get that one. Let me do that one first. Something new this year is the Great Norton Holiday Light Contest. This is something new, like I said. It's an idea from Kim Olenna from the Park and Rec Commission. You can register on Park and Rec website for $25 per address by December 5. From December 7 through the 31st, voting will take place. Listing of the registrants with address will be on the website with a map for those who want to see the actual lighting in person. Some houses can't have visitors, which are on dead-end streets, et cetera, but they can still enter. We just, we'll just not list them as, for their address at that location. Address with the largest number of votes will win $100 plus the first-place trophy. Second and third prize will also win trophies as well. So that's something new in town, could be a lot of fun. So those of you that are creative and want to get out and decorate, make sure you send in those fixtures to the Park and Rec for consideration in this contest. Coats for kids and families donate coats December 1st or January 2nd. You can donate warm winter coats for children and adults at the Norton Town Hall lobby, and Park and Rec will get them over to Anton's Cleaners for cleaning. Coats only, please, all sizes welcome.
There's your coat.
All coats are professionally cleaned by Anton's and distributed to families in need through a network of over 90 local social service agencies, schools, and nonprofit organizations. And we're going to do a recap of the Halloween Parade, which was held on the 26th. There were 64 participating groups, up from 51 in 2024. They did try to sell some T-shirts, but that unfortunately didn't work. There were two food trips at the end of the parade. The one with sandwiches did well, the ice cream shop didn't do too good. Too, was too cold, which I agree with. Halloween costume exchange gave out, they took in 196 costumes, they gave out 75, and they, 53 were donated to DCF in Taunton. CPR and AED class that was held, 16 people participated in that. They also held the babysitting one-on-one class with 16 participants also in that, in that group. The over 25 and 30 basketball pickup league, the women's league has over, for over 25, has 13 participants, and the men's league for over 30 has 23 participants. The Learn the Skate Fall Two Session had one, and the Self-Defense Class had six participants. So as you can see, the Park and Rec Department has been very, very busy. I do want to say that I was involved, we were all involved in the Halloween Parade, and turnout was terrific. It was a great day, it was kind of cold, but we managed to get through the parade and get it done, and I don't think I've ever seen as much candy thrown out in the parade as I did that day. So I think the dentists in town are very, very thankful for all of our effort, but I want to do, take a moment to thank the Park and Recreation Committee, and Melissa also, for the great job they did, and it was, it was well done, it was well orchestrated, and it seemed to work pretty well, other than the selectmen holding up the parade, I think everything else went very well.
Hey, 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 hey.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I have one announcement as well. November 22, which is Saturday, the Norton Holiday Toy Drive will be taking place for, I forget if it's the fifth or sixth year, sponsored by the C2 Foundation, Norton Police Department, Norton Fire Department, and the Norton High School Math Honor Society. Toys can be dropped off between 9:00 and 1:00 o'clock at the Horseshoe in front of the Yell School, or at Bog Iron Brewery from 2:30 to 9:30 p.m. They're looking for donations of new unwrapped toys and gift cards, and there's an Amazon wishlist that you can visit for more ideas.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more.
Yes, sir.
Xfinity wants to let everyone know that as of December 1, ABC programming will move from WLE Channel 6, which is high-definition 806, to WJAR ABC on Channel 21, high-definition 815. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Onto new business. First item, declare that Norton Police Department's 2010 Ford Taurus sedan is surplus. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you. So there is a Ford 2010 Taurus and a 2016 Dodge Ram. We're expecting two new Cruisers that were funded through the Springtown meeting. They will arrive within the next month or two. These two vehicles have 111,000 miles, 105,000 miles respectively, with a laundry list of repairs from the town mechanic. So it's advantageous to, to not keep spending money on repairs when we have two new Cruisers that are funded.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we declare the Norton Police Department's 2010 Ford Taurus sedan and 2016 Dodge Ram 1500 as surplus.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next item, Keno Monitor at Old Colony Wine and Spirits, 376 Old Colony Road.
So this is correspondence from the Massachusetts State Lottery. They're providing an updated Keno Monitor at the Old Colony Wine and Spirits. If the select board objects, then we will send them a letter so stating.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Let me make a motion, we notified the lottery, we have no objections to the Old Colony Wine and Spirits. We got any Keno license?
I'll second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any other questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item, Financial Management Review from the Mass Division of Local Services, Financial Management Resource Bureau. Mr. Town Manager.
So I'm really excited about this one. I've had the pleasure of working on a few of these with the Financial Management Resource Bureau of DLS, DOR, and what it is, it's, it's the state experts on financial management. So it's essentially a free audit, but it's not an audit of past transactions, per se. It's an audit of management practices, policies, how the departments work together, the treasurer, the accountant, the charter, the bylaws, and how things are processed. They briefly interview each major stakeholder, the select board, town manager, finance departments, and make non-binding recommendations. And there's a lot of towns and cities in a waiting list for this. It's a no-cost way, it's a free service they provide, and it provides for long-term financial stability, fiscally responsible management, and getting in the queue now would be my recommendation. So I would, I mean, happy to take questions on this. I found it very helpful in the past. The motion I would ask if the select board is inclined is to authorize the town manager to send a letter to the, to the state agency requesting a financial management review.
Okay, thank you, sir. I cannot find any, any reason why we wouldn't do this myself. Is there any downside to this, potentially?
Not at all. They're non-binding recommendations, so we don't have to do anything they say, it's just an extra set of eyes and, and a lot of experience.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So, just so I'm clear on this, Mr. Town Manager. The, they look at everything, when you say everything, do they look at the school side of the budget also? Does it involve both sides, or is it just the one side?
Well, the school is the bulk of our budget. I don't think that it would be directing school officials, per se, just saying what's the most effective best practices, whether that's integration of school in town and certain financial practices, which they have recommended in the past, so, so that's a long way of saying yes.
Okay. Do they look at obvious, you know, things such as surplus vehicles or equipment, or do they get into that far, into the meat of it, or not?
Right, I mean, they're not going to tell you which VIN numbers they suggest should go where, but, but yes, they would look at the fleet, the, the big picture things. Asset management inventory, CIP, checks and balances.
And this is no cost to the town?
No cost whatsoever.
I can't see a downside. You know, it's not a financial audit, but it is a policies, procedures, and best practices type of audit.
Right, they would look at strengthening, strengthening our bond rating, making sure we're sustainable, and, and give us tips and pointers.
Mr. Chair, I just want to ask you, how do they, there's a long waiting list, you had noted. Is it next come, next serve, or is there a kind of a priority list that's rated? How do you get to the front of the line?
So I used to work with Zach for many years, who's the head of the bureau, and I will tell him how advantageous this would be to us. I was involved in one in Taunton, and it was very helpful. So it's, it's completely up to them how they prioritize them, but I will try to, to push us to the top.
And I would think with a, a new town manager, maybe some additional, new staff members, new select board, two out of the five, this is a good time to do something like this. So I applaud you for pulling it forward, and I completely get it, I understand. It's a way to, like you mentioned, identify best practices from what other communities are doing, towns and cities throughout the Commonwealth, and replicate some of those. Maybe they can learn some things from us as well, that they can utilize in their next reviews, but it's a, you know, policies, procedures, best practices, activities that occur, not necessarily the accounting aspect of it, it doesn't sound like, as far as numbers, basically, how do we do things, rather than, you know, how much do they cost? I'm guessing, you know, I'm just, but this is, yeah, this is well-written the way you had laid it out for us, so I'm all for it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that I move that the select board authorize the town manager to formally request a financial management review from the Massachusetts Division of Local Services, Financial Management Resource Bureau, FMRB. Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, thank you. Unanimous, Jen?
And Mr. Chair, if I, if I may also, this might be a good time, I'm not familiar with the, the actual annual audit that we go through. I know there's a line item there, I don't want to put the town manager on the spot, but maybe if it's not, maybe at a next meeting, we can kind of talk about that. I'm guessing, I think it's like $30,000 a year we budget for an actual nuts and bolts audit with our finances.
Very good guess, it's, it's right in that range. I think it's 28 to 30,000. I just coincidentally spoke with the accountant about this a few days ago, and we are entering year three of our contract with our current auditor, and they are scheduled to come in the next month or two. So after that, then I would advise the select board, maybe as early as a few months from now, to put out an RFP to enter into a contract with another auditor for the next three years. And that's a great opportunity to provide another set of eyes. In the corporate world, companies are forced to change auditors every five years. If you're publicly traded, you have to. In government, people kind of reuse the same auditors, which I think we've done for many years, so it'd be good to put out an RFP and then give the board the choice.
Absolutely, great. And not necessarily looking for the cheapest one, the one that's going to provide the most value and direction and insight, you know, and a different set of eyes, like you mentioned. Not, it'll be interesting to see what, that they come up with this time around, but I don't think the public realizes that we have an annual external impartial audit that is performed against the town's finances every year. I don't think many people know that.
There's a 110-page report on the website that anyone can go to, it's last year's audit. It's very interesting, actually.
Good.
Chairman.
Thank you.
So Scanlon Company has been doing it for many, many years, but I will tell you that they've done a very, very thorough job of reviewing these, these old accounts, to the point where it's maddening, I'm sure, at times for the employees and the building itself. There's not just one person that does it, they come in with a bank of professionals, and they really go through the meat of this thing and look at it, to make sure that everything is, is done entirely on the, on the up and up. So when they're done with their research, they will come before this board and report back to us on anything that they might have, might have been exposed to. And I can't remember in the past very, maybe a couple of incidents where they, they might have found something we needed to do a bit different than how we do it, but I think for the most part, we're doing a pretty good job on the financial side of it, but it is, I agree with the town manager, I think it's perhaps it's time that we start looking at, you know, another set of eyes to come in that might see things differently than we're seeing them today, so, but Scanlon has done a very good job for us over the years.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for putting this forth, Mr. Town Manager. Okay. Other business topics, not reasonably anticipated, 48 hours in advance. None? All right, town managers report.
I do have a few items this evening. First, I'd like, I'm happy to announce that through the hard work of our accountant, our fire chief, police chief, and others, we have identified surplus Verizon lines we're not using that will save the town an estimated 22,000 per year. That's approximately, we're talking 50 lines that we're not using, we don't need, so that's a huge savings, and kudos to everyone involved with that. Also, Ray Cord, Ray Cord helped there, too. Email and website modernization, so we're moving to a .gov domain, so, and that will also change our emails. Our current emails will still work, but going forward, in the next week or two, we'll have .gov emails, and that just adds an extra layer of security, so, you know, hackers will have a more difficult time to get in, and people know it's authentic. We rolled out the 10-year CIP, very excited about that, long-term planning, operating budgets kicking off next week. Department heads will be asked to provide their recommendations for next fiscal year. We're a little earlier than in past years, I'd really like to dive deep into it this PFAS is well underway, and we're working with the engineers. In PFAS litigation, we've actually received a couple checks recently, for a total of $93,572.37, and those are for PFAS-related settlements. We're expecting an anticipated extra $200,000 over the next eight... We're expecting an anticipated extra two hundred thousand over the next eight years, which have to be used for PFAS-related purposes, of which we have no shortage at the moment. We're continuing remediating for PFAS, as well as exploring other cost-effective solutions with other municipalities. And lastly, a couple announcements, Anilum is inviting the, the select board to a groundbreaking ceremony at Twenty Commerce Way on December seventeenth from nine-thirty to eleven-thirty. The governor, our state delegation, will be in attendance, so feel free to show up or let me know if, if you're coming, I can tell them to reserve you a spot. And lastly, the lady, I just found out about an hour ago, the ladies PGA is coming back next year, August twenty-seventh to thirtieth. That's all subject to any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Any questions from the board? No? All right. So sounds good, the operating budget early start. Love to see it.
It's a big project.
Yep. Instead of waiting? Absolutely. Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. All right. So select board's report in mail, we don't have anything, do we?
Mr. Chairman, I have something, a couple of things I want to bring up. I had a meeting with DOT this past, last week, along with town manager, to talk about some of the issues that the Norton Traffic Safety Committee's been working on. And East Main Street, we just had a traffic study done. We're in the process of trying to reduce the speed limits on East Main. We were advised that by DOT that that is not possible, that once the speed goes up in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you can't bring it down, which I think is totally ridiculous, but that is the rule. So we will look at other ways to try to reduce the speed, especially in front of Wheaton College, without having to actually change the speed limits themselves. Woodard Street was approved as a truck exclusive, excluded truck route last September. We did not get notification, this board did not get it, and the Traffic Safety Committee did not get it also, but it was approved last September twenty-sixth. And so now trucks are, are not allowed on Woodard Street legally. The years we had a sign posted, it was not a legal sign, but now it is. We recently received a note from the school department regarding school zones on West Main Street. I brought that subject up to Mass Highway, how our school crossings and areas around our schools are not being properly, proper signage is not in place. They totally agreed with us, and basically threw it back in our lap and said, well, if you want to get it done, basically we have to come up with a plan on how it's going to get done. So again, we'll bring that back to the Safety Committee to see if you can come up with some kind of direction on that. And my final comment is for the next agenda. Mr. Chairman, if we could, the folks from Site One on Newland Street, I'd like to have someone come in, a representative come in, and give us an update on what's going on with that project down there. We were told that would be over with as of the end of August, and now we're being told that this DEP-approved projects will be going, ongoing for at least another year, if not longer. So I think we need to get an update. Traffic, truck, truck traffic was restricted from seven to seven. I'm being told they're still getting, coming in earlier in the morning. So I think it's time to sit down with Site One, which is a viable business. It's not a nonprofit, it's not, it's a, it's a business that makes money on, on the backs of our citizens. So I think it's important to have them come in and explain to us what exactly the process is, what they're doing, and what their intentions are. And I think it's time to sit down and talk to them.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kimball. Mr. Town Manager, can you make sure that, that we do call in Site One? Because I agree with that.
I've been in correspondence with, with a couple people, representatives, so I'll invite them with the next meeting or just one of the next few meetings?
I say the next meeting.
Next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was concerned looking over the documents, there, there have been five fire calls in the past fourteen months.
Yeah. It, it was, Mr. Kimball is a hundred percent right, the timeline of operations, and it, it seems like it has expanded beyond that, so I think we should, we should hear from them.
I think one thing that everyone has to understand on this is, when you have a privately-owned company doing business in conjunction with the DEP, whenever something comes into town like this, like, I'll give you an example, Edinburgh Windfield years ago, when they were coming in and they were going to use our roads to, to close their, for the closure of their windmill, we worked out an agreement where we had like, almost like a fee for each truck, you know? Not to say that that's, this is how this is going to work, but when the town negotiates a deal like this, usually you can get some kind of a user fee from them, if it's, if it's going to have an impact, if nothing else, just to improve the road once they're done, if nothing else. This one was, has, by the way, has nothing to do with the town. We had no approval process in the whole process of it. It was done through the DEP. It's a process that takes waste, food waste from the city, and mixes it in with mulch to create a better quality mulching process, I assume. And it's a fire hazard, as, as the town manager said, so I, I just think it's, we've been pushed around long enough on this, and I think it's time we sit down with someone and find out exactly what's going on. I thank you for supporting me on that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Next item, we have warrants. Mr. Town Manager, do you want to speak to any of the warrants, or any, any board members? Speak to any of the current warrants other than they are, or want to remind everybody that happens to be watching or watching in the future, that all the, all the payroll and invoice warrants, every single line item, is now part of the agenda packet and also posted to the town website as part of the agenda packet.
I'll, I'll just add that there's a very high level of transparency here. We're, we're leading the cities and towns in transparency, and a lot of these expenses are interesting and worth looking at, if you get the chance.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would ask if the town manager, if he hasn't already, just to reach out to the school superintendent and just make the school committee aware that this is all posted on our website. They have their own accounting, and I remember going through when I was in the school committee, it's detailed like this as well, but sometimes you see other information on here. Like, I know there are a lot of, I read through this whole thing, and I remember some of the out-of-district tuitions and, you know, chapter seven sixty-six, the Bloom Bus Company, Rees Collaborative. I'm familiar with a lot of these expenditures, but just so the school committee knows that you have this detail from our town accountant, and they can access it themselves if it's, you know, beneficial, beneficial to them at all, so.
Sure. Happy to, and in the future, we'll look for a more, you know, user-friendly way to, to have like, maybe expense categories or something, rather than just a PDF with, with endless documents that may not be user-friendly.
Perfect. That'd be great.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Kevin. All right. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to approve warrant number AP twenty-six dash twenty dated November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve payroll warrant PR twenty-six dash ten for the weekend ending November eighth, twenty twenty-five, warrant dated November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye. Chairman, a motion to approve invoice warrant AP twenty-six dash twenty-one dated November twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Okay. Next meeting's agenda, December fourth, two thousand twenty-five. We have two thousand twenty-six license renewals so far, and we're going to add representative from Site One to join us for the party. And anything else, any other?
Mr. Chair, just one administrative thing. I was going through the town website early today. I was, I had some free time at work, don't tell my boss. But anyway, I was looking at all of the boards and committees and their most recent agendas and minutes. Most of them are, are pretty timely, but there are some that stood out that haven't posted their minutes in several months. I'm not going to name any boards and committees right now, but if you go on, you can see one that did, hasn't posted any minutes at all in twenty twenty-five, and they're a pretty important board, and they were appointed by us. So I just wanted to mention, maybe somebody can check that and follow up with each of them. And I know that we can't post the minutes until they're approved, and I know there's a lag time there, and I know that you may not be fully staffed in the office, the person that might post these in the past. But I think there's some room for improvement there, just to be completely transparent with the public and make sure that minutes, as they're approved, are posted in a timely manner. And then for ourselves, I know we don't have an executive session meeting tonight, but I, I didn't see any of our executive session minutes posted at all for this calendar year. There were one or two last year. I don't know if it bundled in with the, the regular minutes from that night. I, I know we had an executive session meeting that I was really interested in getting it approved and posted, because I know that the Sun Chronicle was running a story on it, and I never saw the story, but, and I don't even remember what the topic was, to be honest with you, but we should look back and see our executive minutes and see if we can post those. If, if, if the meeting.
I believe they are.
Oh, they are? Yeah. They weren't listed as executive session, though, so maybe they're bundled in with the regular meeting minutes?
Because I did post those, I think it's the opioid one that you were, you're referring to?
Yeah, and I couldn't remember the date. I didn't go back and look at them all.
I believe it was in September, so maybe September twenty-third.
Okay.
Off the top of my head.
It was that one. Thank you, it was the opioid. So maybe in the future, if we're going to hold a separate meeting that we post the executive minutes, because they need to stand out, because nobody sees these videos or live meetings for executive meetings, right? So the only thing they can go towards are the minutes. So if we have a separate line item, you know, nine twenty-five regular session minutes, nine twenty-five executive session minutes, so if people are interested in what we talked about in the executive session, they'll be able to easily find it, rather than trying to figure out what day it happened. And, and we all know that once the reason, the purpose for the executive meeting is behind us, we either take a vote, or we negotiate a contract, or whatever the case may be, then they have to become public records, so. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and, and I'll agree, there, when I came here, there was a board, I won't say which one, that had over a year of unrecorded minutes, and I believe they met earlier this week and approved a handful of them, so we'll keep working on the rest of them.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Town Manager.
Okay. Thank you, Kevin. We don't have an executive session, so take a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Meeting adjourned.